Development Code. A special use permit is special permission to use property in a fashion which the zoning classification of the property does not automatically permit. If we grant a special use permit, we may impose reasonable conditions on the use of the property, which must be satisfied if the special use permit is to remain valid. Unlike a change in the zoning classification, as a general rule, a special use permit applies only to the specific use requested in the application for a special use permit. The standards we use in deciding whether or not to grant a special use permit are listed in Section 45-1083 of the Land Development Code. Procedurally, we will call this case by name and number. A member of the staff will then briefly explain to us the nature of each request. We will then take any comments from the applicant or their representative, followed by any public comments concerning the request. Please direct all comments and statements to the board and not to other people in the audience. Before speaking, we will ask each person to be recognized and come forward to the lectern and identify his or herself by name and address. After all persons wishing to speak have been heard, we will entertain a motion from the board. The motion will be voted on by board members and become a final order. Any decision by this board can be appealed to the Circuit Court. However, any appeal must be filed within 30 days after the Board of Adjustments has rendered the final order which is being appealed. Are there any questions? Before the first case is heard today, all of those wishing to speak will need to be sworn in. Will the notary please administer the oath? And before we hear the staff report, I'd like to do an ex parte communication roll call.
Joel Valenti?
No.
Mark Fisher?
No.
Roy Weaver?
No.
Linda Ockhorn?
No.
Mary Ratliff?
No.
T. Davis?
No.
Linda Bazar?
No.
Ron West?
No.
Okay, staff, if you're ready.
Thank you, Mrs. Chairman. This is the variance VAR 23000010, October 18, 2023. This is for 134 Park Drive in Satsuma. The lot size is .19 acres, give or take. It is zoned residential 1A. It is an urban service area, and the request is to place an accessory structure on the lot across the street from the residence, as is allowed by the Land Development Code, The subject parcel comprises lot 51 of the San Mateo State's second edition recorded subdivision, reported on November 27, 1959. The primary residence is located at 135 Park Drive at Satsuma, directly across the street. The applicant acquired the parcel in 2018. The applicant wishes to build a permanent garage on the parcel to accommodate their lack of storage space on the usable land on their main property. The Land Development Code anticipates such scenarios in which accessory structures cannot be placed on the same lot as the primary residence. Section 45-104B reads, "In order to place an accessory structure on a lot or parcel separated by a public or private street for the principal use of a structure, the property owner must obtain a variance from the zoning board of adjustments following the requirement provided in Article 9, Division 4 of this code. The proposed garage will be no larger than 30 by 50 and is similar to other garages built on the street for homes in the neighborhood." Here you can see the aerial view of the property in question. You will note that the property, the main residence is highlighted in blue, and the property that the garage will be on is highlighted in red. Here you can see the zoning map, and you'll see that it is, as mentioned before, all the same zoning. Here is the future land use, and once again, all the same urban service. Here you can see the, I believe this is the water, sorry, the flood zone map, and you'll see that none of it is in any special hazard flood area, aside from tiny portions on the rear end of the main property. And here you can see that there are no wetlands located on either parcel. Here is a site plan that was given to us by the applicant. You can see that the structure is, as mentioned, no larger than 30 by 50. And finally, we come to the variance criteria. The primary structure is located across the street at 135 Park Drive. It is on a parcel that conforms to the zoning district, 80 feet by 150 feet, with the rear being the waterfront. Waterfront setpax does not permit the placement of a structure within 25 feet from the high water line, as the LDC, Section 45104, provides relief allowing for accessory structure to be placed across the street. The configuration of the parcel containing the applicant's residence nor the placement of the small storage shed on the subject lot was a result from the applicant's part to comply with the applicable county regulations. The use is permitted in the zoning district. With the approval of a variance, any citizen of Putnam County has the ability to make a similar request. Literal interpretation would require the structure to be placed on the same site and deprive the applicant of the avenue to make this request. Conditions intended to mitigate the aesthetic impact of the large metal structure on the surrounding established residential neighborhood by requesting the applicant provide landscape planting that is consistent with the existing vegetation. The minimum variance is the allowable use of an accessory structure. In this case, the future garage is across the street from the principal structure. The property may be reasonably utilized without granting the present variance for any permitted by right in the R1A zoning district. The LDC provides the avenue to allow the placement of accessory structures on a lot separated by a street and is the minimum that would make possible such use. Staff finds that the requested variance meets the criteria required for the issuance of a variance in LDC, Section 45-833, and recommends approval on the requested variance to allow an accessory structure on the lot separated by the street from the principal use, subject to the following conditions. All required permits pertaining to the construction of an accessory use shall be obtained prior to the start of construction. The exterior of the proposed building shall be compatible with the existing residential character of the neighborhood. Metal siding shall be painted or coated or colored in a manner that matches or complements the applicant's single-family residence at 135 Park Drive. To mitigate the aesthetic impact on the proposed structure to the surrounding neighborhood, prior to the final inspection of the structure, the applicant shall install shrubbery, a minimum of 18 inches in height planned three foot on center along the park drive right-of-way and along the adjoining property line within view of the proposed building. Any questions?
Any questions? I have a question. The requirement for the shrubbery?
Yes, ma'am.
When does that have to go in?
The shrubbery has to be in place before the final inspection is done for the shed. As long as it is in there when the final inspection is done, then it will be approved. If not, they will be fined.
Okay.
Penalized. Sorry, not fined.
It would not be fined. We would just require them to install the shrubbery before we would issue the certificate of occupancy.
Okay.
My apologies.
That's okay. Any other questions?
Earl has one.
I have a question.
One quick question. This thing's got water, it's got septic, and it's got electric in it. Are they planning on putting living quarters in there also?
I will defer you to the applicant for that question. At this time, staff is not aware if they are intending to or not. From what we have been informed, it seems that this is mainly to store classic cars and also to occasionally wash them. Any further questions?
Any further questions?
That was my question.
Okay, you got it. Before we proceed, let's do a site visit roll call, please.
Joel Valenti?
Yes.
Mark Fisher?
Yes.
Roy Weaver?
Yes.
Linda Ockhorn?
Yes.
Mary Ratliff?
Yes.
T. Davis?
Yes.
Linda Bazar?
Yes.
Ron West? Yes.
Okay, the applicant is Joel and Bridget Hines. Are they here today?
Hines, yes.
Okay, would you come up, please? For the record, please state your name and address.
Joel Hines, 135 Park Drive. The property's on 134.
Okay, Satsuma.
Satsuma, I'm sorry.
All right, the question that Mr. Valenti had, if you want to, or you want to say anything prior to answering questions?
No, actually, you have a good crew here, and they've done a very good job, and I want to thank them for that. They've been very helpful in this process for me, and thank all of you for what you do as well. I don't have anything really to add, other than to answer Earl's question, if that's what you'd like me to do at this point.
You want to restate your question, Mr. Valenti?
There's sewer, there's water, and there's electric going in this building.
Yes, sir.
There's gonna be living quarters in there also?
There will not be living quarters put in there, no.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
With that in mind, was that part of the recommendation for approval?
No, ma'am. The living quarters are not part of the recommendation for approval. The...
I didn't mean living quarters. I just meant the electricity.
Oh, no, ma'am. Electricity was not part of the requirements.
Okay, so is that going to be a separate permit from whomever, or?
Madam Chair, if I may, so if he wants to have electricity and water and a septic system for his garage, there's nothing that would prevent him from doing that, as long as they are permitted. He could permit those improvements with the building, or he can have the building erected now, and then later on down the line, put power, water, and drainage for the sewer or septic to it.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, honestly, I like to do things first, you know, instead of trying to do it later on with the cement and everything else. So plumbing, so I have drainage. I have a 1971 Super B that we completely redone. It's my wife's mother's car and been sitting for 40 years, so we fixed that all up. And as you know, here, we've been living in Florida for about seven years now. It's pretty rough, so when you spend that kind of money on a paint job and all of that, we need a place to put that. And of course, my lawn tractor and things of that nature has fallen apart in the last six and a half years living there because it's outside, have nowhere to put it. And then I have a motorcycle as well. And now we're raising a three-year-old, so, you know, a nice little playground for him on a different side of the canal would be nice as well. So that's, so I just, if you're gonna build something, I wanna build it big enough, and if you're gonna do something, do it right the first time is my mentality.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
Ms. Bazar, did you have a question for me?
I just was wondering about the septic tank that's showing on the property. Was that, has that always been there? I mean, was there a house there at one time?
No, there was a shed there, I believe, and I don't know this for sure, but I believe the person that owned the house prior, that's right behind that property on the other street, I think they had built a shed. So there is a cement slab there right now that I tried to take up, but they did a pretty good job with that. The rest of the building, they didn't do a very good job, and by the time I owned it, and I didn't even know it was there until I bought the property, even right across the street from my house because it was so overgrown. But once I had it, you know, cleared, there was this dilapidated shed, the 16 by 20, and so I've got a permit to have that tore down because it was holes everywhere and the bugs and all that, so I took all that down. So I believe that was the only thing, and that was part of the house that's on another side of the fence from there. So I don't believe there's a septic tank there. I've done a little bit of digging in there. I haven't found anything that tells me there is a septic. I would like to put one there for drainage, for, you know, washing and things like that and rinsing off my floor, just so I have a drain going out to a septic and not into, you know, something that would be, I think, illegal, you know? I don't want to do anything like that. So I've already checked with the county for water, and it's very simple. It's on that side of the street, so I can plug into that very simply. And as far as all the landscaping and all that that's requested, I've been in the green industry and landscaping for a lot of years, so I'll make that very nice and easy. So I specialize in landscape lighting too, if anybody needs it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? I thank you, sir.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
Anyone in the audience wishing to come forward and speak in favor of this application? No one's coming. Anyone wish to come forward and speak in opposition? No one's coming forward, so at this time, we close it to the public and open it up for board motion and discussion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move, make a motion, I guess I should say. I'd like to motion, make a motion to move that we approve variance number VAR 23-000010, as it does meet the criteria for variance as required by Section 45-833 of the Putnam County Land Development Code, with the conditions that staff has recommended, and authorize the chairman to sign the final order.
Seconds.
We have a motion second to approve variance 23-000010. Is there any further discussion? If none, all of those in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. One, two, three, four, five. All opposed? Motion carries eight zero. So you have a 30-day appeal process. If there's any issues or concerns, please work closely with staff. You've already given them a high recommendation, so, okay. All right, thank you. Good luck. Okay, before we hear the next case. SUP 23-00009, we will have an ex parte communication roll call.
Joel Valenti?
No.
Mark Fisher?
No.
Roy Weaver?
No.
Linda Ockhorn?
No.
Mary Ratliff?
No.
T. Davis?
No.
Linda Bazar?
No.
Ron West? No.
Okay, Mrs. Brown, are you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay.
Madam Chair, and planning, excuse me, Zoning Board of Adjustment members. For the record, Nancy Brown, Planning and Development Services. I'm gonna present to you the special use permit case, SUP 23-00009. It is a communications or cell tower located in the agricultural zoning district, excuse me, or proposed to be located in the agricultural zoning district. The applicant is, or applicants are Howard A. Endeavour A. Griffin. The agent is James Johnston with Chutes &amp; Bowen, LLP. The location for the proposed tower is a 100 by 100 or 10,000 square foot lease area on approximately 100.65 acres at 1039 Coral Farms Road and Flora Home, excuse me. Future land use is agriculture, and the zoning district is agriculture. Limited background property, subject property again consists of 100.65 plus or minus acres in the Ag zoning district. Tower site is proposed to be in an undeveloped area of a lease space of 100 by 100 or 10,000 square feet on the southern portion of the parcel. Requested for a special use permit to develop a 260-foot tower, cell tower, 250 feet with a 10-foot lightning rod. It is a self-support lattice-style tower, and it is servicer is T-Mobile. The Land Development Code, Section 4572311, allows a communications tower with the approval of a special use permit by the zoning board of adjustment in the Ag district. Proposed communications tower meets or will, excuse me, meet the supplemental requirements under Section 45172 of the Land Development Code, and will be further reviewed by the Development Review Committee to ensure compliance with that section. On the monitor, it may be hard to see, but it is an aerial map. The blue outlines the parcel. It's important to, I don't know if I can do this or not. If you see my cursor, there's an area that is an out parcel of the property that contains Florida Power and Light Substation. Zoning map of the property. Future land use of the property, future land use again in that area is Ag. There are two areas of residential to the northeast and the adjacent to the, what will be the southwest and the southeast. Flood zone map, hard to see again. You saw that in your package, but there's quite a bit of a flood area on the property where the proposed tower is to be located is not within a flood zone, according to the overlays that we have on our GIS map. Wetlands map is presented to you with a little square that shows where the, or the approximate area of the proposed tower. GIS map does have an overlay for the National Wetlands Inventory Maps. Those maps are not to be construed as accurate. They are best scenarios that we can provide on a GIS map. I did put that little square there just so you see that, and any impacts to the wetlands would be required to be mitigated through those who have jurisdiction. And the applicant is here, maybe he can speak to that if there's any questions or concerns. Next slide is a copy of the location of the tower from Coral Farms Road. And the next picture, can't see if it's there or not, but is what the proposed tower would look like in a lattice style. Supplemental use criteria in the regulations per Section 451083 of the Zoning Board of Adjustment shall not grant a special use permit unless it makes written findings that special use permit satisfies the following. Use is consistent with the comprehensive plan and meets the concurrence requirements. A detailed statement of the facts and policies demonstrating compliance or noncompliance shall be included in the final development order. Excuse me. Policy 1.9.3A9 of the comprehensive plan does allow for a type 1 facility in the agricultural land use category. Policy 1.9.4 is provided to you with the information that if there are wetlands, that mitigation must be done, and that the county does try to ensure that the protection of wetlands. And in this case, there are several uses that would be exempt, if you will, from that, but they'd still have to have the regulations for the jurisdictional unit. In this case, it's probably DEP, but it is for essential public services. And we have determined that under Section 4552 of the Land Development Code, that it includes telephone equipment installations as an essential public service. Number B, or letter B, the use is allowed in the zoning district by special use permit, and it is under 4572 for an E number 11. Special use will not adversely impact or unduly restrict the enjoyment of permitted uses in the surrounding area. Staff feels that no adverse impacts or restrictions would be on the property closest residential. Dwelling to the property is 752.3 feet from the center of the proposed tower location and on the east side of Coral Farms Road. The proposed location is set back in excess of 600 feet from Coral Farms Road, and the residential development, there's trees in the area which could allow for screening of the tower. Item D, special use will not substantially diminish or impair property values in the area nor impede the orderly development and improvement of the surrounding property for permitted uses. The proposed development is not anticipated to diminish or impair property values nor impede the orderly development or improvements of the surrounding areas. It is anticipated that silviculture and agricultural operations in the area will continue, and the installation of a communications tower will not impair or impede the established future land use or the zoning designation assigned to the properties surrounding the proposed site. The applicant states that the search was based on the proposed site's location relative to the current surroundings, sites, and capacity enhancements needed within the county, specifically in the area southwest of Georgia's Lake community. And again, the applicant is here, he can speak to that. Adequate access is going to be provided by a 30-foot non-exclusive easement. That easement comes from Coral Farms Road that is existing, and existing to the Florida Power Substation, so the easement is going to be extended to the proposed site if approved. Adequate measures have been taken for ingress and egress. Again, the 30-foot easement is nonexclusive, is for access and utility from Coral Farms Road. Proposed tower is unmanned, therefore, there's no parking requirements, and traffic will G, adequate screening and buffering of the special use will be provided if needed. I have the list of, directly from the Land Development Code, but I'll read them. Row of shade trees with a minimum of 6 feet tall, maximum of 10 feet apart, around the perimeter of the fence, a continuous hedge at least 36 inches in height, time of planting, capable of growing at least 48 inches within the first 18 months planted in front of the tree line referenced above. All landscaping shall be native, drought tolerant, and/or irrigated properly to ensure their maintenance, health, and vitality. Existing vegetation preserved to the maximum as possible, and of course, these standards can be waived by the Director of Planning and both sides of the tower, and that'll be determined, something determined at the time of development review. Special use will not have any signs or exterior lighting that would cause glare. Real quickly, I'll just say, no lighting is required except for the lighting of the tower and then as proposed. There is a sign that needs to be clearly visible to the entrance of the tower identifying the owner and the operator of the tower and irrelevant contact information, and that is required. Okay, on I, there will be no undue risk to persons or property from hazardous substances, and no hazardous substances are proposed for development. A special use permit will not adversely affect the general health and welfare, safety and welfare of the residents of Putnam County. An applicant, the, an application may not be denied on the basis of the zoning board makes finding that the specific manner in which the proposed use would not be such adverse effect. adverse effect. Proposed tower is located adequate distance from residential area. The applicant states it's the self-supporting, it's a self-supporting structure and it will be designed such that, hold on just a second, such that, my life on my face, and the event of failure, it has a collapse zone of 35 feet and it's designed to collapse into itself. Communications Tower is intended to positively affect the general area and general welfare by improving, improving communication services in the Georgia's Lake community. The proposed communications tower should pose no adverse effects to the general public health and safety and welfare of residents of Putnam County. Also, required findings by the zoning Board of Adjustment need to be, need to be reviewed. It's under Section 45172H of the Land Development Code. I'll go briefly through them. Number one is co-location. If co-location cannot be, cannot, if they cannot co-locate on a tower that is within the area, then they must tell us why. And they did, the applicant did provide substantial evidence that, from the engineer saying that the tower, there was no, nothing, no towers, no buildings high enough that would meet their requirements. Closest tower is about three miles away from the proposed tower. Number two, tower will be compatible with existing contiguous uses and with the general character of the neighborhood where it's located. The design of the tower and, and the trees and the surrounding area will eliminate the obtrusiveness of a tower. The self-support tower, 250-foot lattice, there's 260-foot lattice will be set back again 600 feet from Coral Farms Road. Mitigate, number B, the mitigating effect of existing and proposed landscaping, fencing of the structure of the area, material trees surrounding the property provides a natural buffer for the tower site, plus mitigating any other structures that are in the area for security. Six-foot fence with three strands of barbed wire proposed to contain the 10,000-square-foot facility. The proximity of the tower to existing or proposed buildings or structures, the closest residential structure according to the application is 752.3 feet and on the east side of Coral Farms Road. And again, the tower's in excess of 600 feet from Coral Farms Road. The nature of use of surrounding property, surrounding property, vacant tree area, tillable soil, range and pasture lands and a power utility easement and sporadic single-family dwellings on Coral Farms Road within proximity of the proposed tower site. The topography is it's wooded, appears to contain mature trees as stated prior. Potential impacts of the proposed tower located within the adjacent or, and property formerly designed with comprehensive plan. GIS indicates that the presence of the wetlands is on, presence of the wetlands on, on the property. Again, like I said earlier, the, if there is wetlands determined to be on the property, they would either have to mitigate or perhaps get, well, they have to get the permission from the jurisdictional entity. Okay, number three, tower will not have any significant detrimental impact on the adjacent property values. The proposed tower is not anticipated to significantly impact adjacent property values. However, only a certified appraiser could provide an expert opinion addressing property values. Design standards are met or will be met and again, will be verified at the development review stage by the development review committee. Conclusions recommendation, it is recommended by staff that the special use permit be approved for 260-foot tower, that's 250-foot tower with a 10-foot appearance, which is a lightning rod with the following conditions by staff. Number one, obtain development review committee review and approval. Number two, obtain and maintain any applicable state, county, state or federal license and registration. Number three, prior to any issue, it's a building permit, a surety bond or letter of credit, cash or some other surety to the county administrator is required. It's a payable bond, 150% of the estimated cost to dismantle the communications tower as required by Section 45172. Number four, prior to the issue of building permit, provide an easement granted to the fee owner of the remaining underlying tower in favor of Putnam County. In case we have to go in and remove the tower, we want to have the permission to do so. And let's see. Number five, prior to the issue of building permit, provide, grant permission from the owners and the beneficial leaseholders that the, in the form acceptable to the county or the county staff, agents or contractors to enter upon the property if there is a case of a violation or if there is a need to remove the tower. Every 10 years, you have to comply with the structural engineering requirements and provide that to the building department every 10 years. Upon approval of special use permit, as any Board of Adjustment, the applicant is required to meet all the conditions of the Land Development Code and any conditions added by the Board of Adjustment. Do you have any questions for me specifically? Any questions? Okay, I know that the agent for the property owner is here and they can answer any questions before you call the agent or anyone else up. Just want to make a note for the record, we had two opposition letters of which you all have been provided with both of them. We're not going to read them into the record, however, they are going to be provided in the record, in the file and with the minutes of the meeting. And Zach wants to say something.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I must confess that I was checking emails during Nancy's presentation and I uncovered a third what appears to be opposition letter that was emailed to me this afternoon. I can read it into the record when we get to that point of the, the public hearing and then we can, we can get all of you a copy of it. I just have to run and print it real quick.
Questions with staff?
I do have.
Ms. Ratliff?
We were talking about, I can't hear you, Mary. I'm sorry. We were talking about the flood situation and you said an agency would have to, I guess, stop that if that in fact is, which agency are we talking about?
Wetlands.
So that would be water management.
If they're in wetlands, I believe it would be under the jurisdiction of the St. John's Water Management District or DEP. And I believe the, the agent probably has that information.
Okay.
But it's one of the two, not us.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
No more questions?
No more questions. Okay, before we hear from the applicant and their agent, let's do a site visit roll call, please.
Phil Balansey?
Yes.
Mark Fisher?
Yes.
Ford Lever?
Yes.
Linda Osborne?
Yes.
Mary Ratliff?
Yes.
T.J. Smith?
Yes.
Bernard Bazar?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we have the agent for this applicant, is it James Johnston? Okay. For the record, please state your name and address.
Hi, James Johnston with Shuts and Bowen, 300 South Orange Avenue in Orlando. On behalf of the property owner, and I do have some pictures I want to show when I get to them. I don't know how to get this.
Present it now, sir.
Oh, okay, great. So I can just, okay, thank you. First, I want to say we appreciate staff's hard work on this application and, you know, we think it's a very thorough staff report. We're in agreement with the staff report and the conditions of approval. As Nancy indicated, we're proposing a 250-foot tall lattice tower with a 10-foot lightning rod. This is on property, as you can see on your screen right now, this is kind of the 30,000-foot, you know, above the property aerial. This is being tucked behind the FP and L electric substation and below, you see going east to west, is the transmission line easement there. I might be able to use, if you can see that. And so it's back here behind the substation, so we think it's in a good location. As mentioned, it is set back 600 feet from Coral Farms Road, over 750 feet from the nearest residence. It's an unmanned facility, which means it has, gets about one visit per month for maintenance purposes, so it really does not have an impact on roads and, and other infrastructure of the counties. It is designed to handle co-location of other antennas for other providers. T-Mobile is the anchor tenant on this tower and that will allow, you know, other providers to go on the tower and help prevent the, you know, additional towers from needing to be built in the area. And as provided with our application, T-Mobile has an existing coverage and capacity gap in this area. Their closest tower, I think, is over 2.4 miles away. And so as shown in the RF documentation provided, this will serve a specific need of T-Mobile to provide coverage and capacity in this area as well as help offload their other towers in the surrounding area. You know, I think it's important to note, typically a provider will always try to co-locate on an existing tower structure first because that's obviously cheaper, faster, easier to get done. It's when there are no towers or structures in the area that they have to build a new tower or propose a new tower and that's what's happening in this situation. And your code requires that we provide evidence that, you know, to try to co-locate first as indicated, there were no structures or towers in the area on which it could, the antennas could be located. And I think another thing that's important is, because I know there have been some letters in opposition, that your code provides or provides requirements that towers are supposed to meet in order, you know, for the protection of, of the surrounding property owners. And as indicated by staff in the staff report, they found, your professional planning staff has found that we meet those requirements. Again, there's no co-location opportunities for T-Mobile with the closest tower 2.4 miles away. And we think the tower is compatible with the existing contiguous uses. As you can see on this first slide, there is agricultural uses to the west. It's behind the electric substation, below the electric transmission line easement over 600 feet from Coral Farms Road. I think if we go to the next one, this is just looking in a little closer at the property. It's heavily wooded along the front, in front of the substation, also in the surrounding areas of the property and certainly across the street and in the other surrounding areas. This next picture is looking actually towards the substation, looking down Coral Farms Road where the substation is on the right. And this shows, obviously there's substantial tree buffering along that side of the road. And this is the entrance road to the substation that will be the access point for the communications tower. And this also shows you're looking down the transmission line easement area there just north of where the tower site will be located. And again, I think this just, I wanted to show the extensive mature trees on both sides of Coral Farms Road in the vicinity of the substation. This is looking kind of, I guess, north, northeast along Coral Farms Road where the substation is on the, on the left side of that picture and, you know, residents, there are some residents across the street on the right, but again, that shows significant tree canopy on that side of the road as well. And this is actually looking towards, this is looking kind of, again, northeast up Coral Farms Road, looking towards what is the closest residential structure, kind of on the right side of that picture, again, behind a substantial tree canopy. And this is the next closest residence, more to the north, as you see again, it's on the right side of, of that picture and behind substantial tree canopy. And I know one of the letters in opposition is for a resident who lives approximately 1,800 feet away and this picture is kind of zoomed out to show that area. The house is on kind of the right side of, of that picture and then you see the substation up in the top left-hand corner. And this is a picture of that house from Coral Farms Road showing it's behind substantial tree canopy and setback. And this is at that driveway looking towards where the tower would be located. And again, this is on Coral Farms Road looking kind of back towards where that house would be located. So, and the purpose I wanted to show of those pictures is to just show, we think this is a really good location for this tower, being behind, budding up against the electric substation property, as you can see, heavily wooded, hard to see from that ground level into that And so again, we, we think we meet the code requirements, the separation requirements. There were questions raised about wetlands on the site. Part of getting a tower approved through the FCC is you have to go through a NEPA review, it's National Environmental Policy Act, through the FCC. That looks at everything from bugs and bunny endangered species to wetlands to floodplain, things like that. And so we have to do a wetland delineation, which they, I just heard back this week, they've heard back that the tower compound site is not in a wetland area. And I think as the survey showed what was submitted, we're not, excuse me, in the floodplain. So we think that this tower will actually serve the public. It'll provide better wireless coverage. We think it's important to the public health, safety and welfare. Over 80% of all 911 calls are now made from wireless devices. We think it's very important to have quality coverage and capacity. So, you know, I'm, I'm here to answer any questions we would ask or I would ask that you follow, you know, your professional planning staff and recommending or approving this special use permit. Appreciate your time.
Any questions for Mr. Johnston?
How close is this to the electrical substation and the power lines?
It's set 160-something feet back from the substation and then set back from the power lines. I don't know the exact footage, but again, we've provided a certified, an engineer certified fall zone letter. The way these towers are designed with hinge points where they collapse within their lease parcels, so it's designed to stay in the, you know, unlikely event of any kind of failure would stay on the, on the lease area.
So they're not worried about it or object to any of it?
No.
Okay.
Okay, I have a, just for clarification.
Yes.
You said the tower's going to be 600 feet from Coral Farms Road and so it's going to be 100 feet from behind the substation, is that?
Correct.
Okay.
So it's, it's kind of like if you think you have the substation here on the road and the transmission line easement here, it's kind of tucked behind where the substation is on the road and the.
Power line.
Transmission line.
So it's going to be west of the substation?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions from staff? Thank you, sir.
Oh, and I would just like to reserve a little time to come back.
Oh, sure.
And respond.
Always.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, is anyone wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this application? No one's coming forward. We do have a speaker card for opposition, so there is usually a time limit, so please, if you have. if you have, we got letters from, I think, the two people that are going to speak today, so be as concise as possible. All right, the first one is Keith, is it Besley or Beasley? Beasley, okay. For the record, please state your name and address.
My name is Keith Beasley. My address is 990 Coral Farms Road in Flora Home. Thank you all for your time today. So I'd like to just address a couple of the things that have been said here. First of all, as far as the property values go and the effect on it, obviously, we don't have a clear, concise notation on that, but according to the National Association of Realtors, a cell tower that is in sight is up to about 20% lowering the property values of the surrounding properties to a cell tower. That would be one thing. And I guess just from, I'm trying not to take up too much of your time, but we moved out here from St. Johns County four years ago, and in an order to kind of escape the urban sprawl that was going out, going on out there, and, and we found this lovely property out here in the country, fantastic neighbors, and, and just a beautiful place to live in Putnam County. So, you know, I still work out in Ponte Vedra, so I drive an hour and a half one way each day, just to live out here in this beauty. And I'm sorry, but a 260-foot tower is not going to be covered by a few trees. I'm just going to state that for the record. And I'm looking at these photos, and kudos to your photographer, because it is quite misleading. You can see that substation coming down Coral Farms Road. You can see it from sideways, you can see it as you're coming down there. So you can also see our homes from Coral Farms Road, but I'm not a photographer, so I don't know what was done, but, and I'm not saying anyone's being dishonest, it's just not the full picture. So please make sure that you understand that you can see these areas. And we're not against a cell tower for the, the people that live in Georgia's Lake area, but we feel that you could move it, that's 100 acres of property there. It could be moved to the middle of that property. They would just have to have the expense of building a road to get back there to do it. And I feel that, you know, we, we are not benefiting from this at all in our area. We have decent cell tower because it's 2.4 miles away from us, and we're not benefiting from it monetarily as the, as the property owner is. So, you know, we're getting penalized with our property values going down. I can't tell you how that would affect our taxation as well. I don't know if that's taken into consideration when our property value is valued for taxation at the same time, but if it's not, then we're getting hit twice from the financial part of it. But really, it's about getting it back and out of the way. If they could move it maybe to the middle of the property, or even farther down the road towards the people that it's supposed to be servicing, which is in Georgia's Lake area. Because they're, where they're talking about putting it is, you know, it's at least two or three miles from Georgia's Lake area. So if the 2.4 miles isn't good enough, I don't see how this is going to be. So, and then I would be very concerned on something that I just heard today, that it's only 150 feet from the substation. If that thing falls on the substation, our power's gone for everyone in that area, including the ones that they're saying. And I say, and I hear them saying, you know, it's going to collapse on itself and that thing. I'd like to see the science on that, because I don't, I just don't understand that. So it, it would have a possibility of falling on that. But I think that's really about all I had to say. I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous. I don't speak in front of people very often, but thank you all very much for your time. I appreciate it.
I have a question for you. So you're at 990?
Yes, ma'am.
So how far, how far away are you from the, are you directly across from the substation? Are you more south?
We are more south. We were the, the picture that's...
The green roof?
No, we had the, the sign that was out front, the Whistler Ranch, right a lot, right after the curve there.
Right.
And then our neighbor is with us as well, who is directly across from it.
Okay.
And so...
Talk to us. Okay, another question. When you, I spent a long time, and I can't remember, was the substation there when you bought your property?
Yes, it was.
Okay. I can't, I know it's been in for a while, but I didn't know how long. Any other questions for Mr. Beasley?
Uh-uh.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, and the next person to speak is Julie Beasley.
Hello, I'm Julie Beasley, and my property address is 990 Coral Farms Road in Flora Home. And I want to set my papers down, but I don't want to, just going to push that back. Is that okay? Thank you for, for giving us the opportunity to speak. I've written down a few things that I want to talk about that are actually in addition to the opposition letter that I did submit. I do want to thank the planning team, because they are always very, very helpful in this county with other property, things that we've been doing, as well as with this in particular, to kind of explain the process, because when you don't work in this field, you don't always really understand what the lingo is. And so they've been very, very helpful. Also, I wanted to say Naomi Charles is here, our neighbor, she didn't feel comfortable coming up to speak, but she did want you to know that she is here, and said that she is in opposition to the cell tower.
Okay, I'm sorry, but you cannot speak for somebody else.
I'm sorry. Okay, see there, I'm still learning.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so my family and I, well, my husband and I made a, a big life change, a relocation four years ago to Putnam County. And we moved here to get green space with kind of a new vision and direction for our lives. We are livestock owners, you know, I come from an agricultural background. We actually have a farm in Ohio that we're co-owners in. And so we really wanted to have this experience in our own state. And after coming here and spending two years of driving back to St. Johns County to serve that community, I'm an educator, and I decided that I wanted to invest in this community that I am living in, and that my family will grow old and have new children and grandchildren. You may have seen earlier, my little grandson was here with my daughter, because they wanted to come and kind of support what I'm going to talk to you about. So I want you to take, they were here and we're here, because we want you to understand who's moving into this area. So we're a family, you know, my husband is well-educated and still traveling to the PGA Tour to continue his work while supporting things here in Putnam County. And I'm an educator, and after, you know, being many years in the St. Johns County number one school district, I wanted to come, and I wanted to lay that aside and invest my time as an educator in Putnam County schools, okay? And, but our reason for moving here was to be part of the agricultural scene, but we bring, I hope, I hope you think that we bring value to this area. And our neighbors are much the same. These are families that moved into this area within the last four years, and when we purchased our lands, it was under the assumption that we were living, and actually the knowledge that we were living in an agriculturally zoned area. So we really had no anticipation that any new industry or utility infrastructures would come in. The things that are there now were there when we purchased, but I am opposed to the cell tower for a number of reasons, but I just want you to know, I am glad to be here. I'm glad that I moved to this area. I am opposed to putting non-agricultural uses on lands along Coral Farms Road. As three-generation of family members, we moved here to create a life and a future for ourselves and our children, our grandchildren. The land that we purchased is going into trust, so that it continues on as agricultural land. And we actually, in the four years we've been here, we more than doubled the land acquisition that we have. We purchased an additional set of acreage that's mostly wetlands, directly behind the 20 acres that we purchased that's directly on Coral Farms Road. And we did that because we have a plan, you know, and our plan is to really support agritourism and agriculture. What's wonderful about the place we live, those were some really nice photos, there is a lot of beautiful oaks and things out there.
Excuse me, Ms. Beasley, we need to hear your reasoning for opposition.
Okay.
Okay. I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, but we sort of get the idea that you enjoy being here, but please be a little bit more specific as far as your objections.
Okay. So in the, the position of where we, of where our home site is, the sun actually, you know, it rises over the barn and it, it sets over Coral Farms Road, okay? And so in the idea of agritourism and establishing that, you need to maintain an area that looks like what it was intended to be. People don't want to come places where, you know, there's a lot of utilities and, and visual obstructions. And really, we have photographers that stop in our driveway to take pictures of the sunsets over Coral Farms Road, and right where the cell tower actually is going to be, is where they are currently, where they currently take their pictures. And we really do envision ourselves as stores of this land. Again, I told you in the, in my write-up, it tells you some of the really specific things that, you know, most people want to hear about on the board, but these are the things that you might want to hear about is how it would impact us financially, how, you know, anywhere from 3% to 20% decrease in the, in the value of your, of your property. I'm glad that, you know, that the board wants to, you know, we need to have tree coverage, but we don't have 260-foot tall tree, trees. You know, six-foot trees are not going to hide, you know, a large tower. Right now, when you come down Coral Farms Road, you know, there's a beautiful silo in agricultural land that draws people. It's a kind of an art piece in itself, but that will cease to exist, that beauty, when you start erecting tall things that equate to about, you know, a 26-foot building, 26-story building out there. We understand that this project is kind of in the paperwork that was submitted, it's kind of been deemed the Georgia's Lake Tower, and, you know, I don't really see anybody here in support of it, but I would imagine there's some families that, that might think a tower would serve, you know, another tower closer would serve them better. And so I would really propose that it be positioned closer to Georgia's Lake, because from the proposed tower site to the backside of Georgia's Lake is a five-mile stretch. And, and maybe this tower can do that, but, you know, 260-foot tower is substantially larger than I think any of the other towers that we have in Putnam County. So, you know, I would just kind of take into consideration, you know, others who are coming to this area, and what we've wanted, and what we see happening out there, as far as the, you know, the kind of pastime experience of traveling down Coral Farms Road. Some of the, there are some solar panels out on Coral Farms Road, they are low, and they're behind shrubs and trees. And yes, there is a substation there that also really, it's, you know, it's not set back very far, but it has the potential to be camouflaged by, by shrubs and trees. The tower unfortunately cannot, and it is within, as far as real estate goes, if, you know, the National Association of Realtors has put together some, you know, research that's been done, and if you're 2,400 feet outside of the cell tower and you can't see the cell tower, then it really has little effect on your property values. However, in our case, and several neighbors near us who already have self, good cellphone connection, we're within that range. And so we would just like you to consider that as well, that, you know, it can have a significant impact on the value of our property. And it certainly will have a significant impact on our intended use for our own property, just because we would like to use it as agritourism eventually, more in the works. And this is a three-generation thing happening here, you know, it's my husband and I.
Okay, Ms. Beasley, we're getting past the time limit, sir.
Okay.
Okay.
But it also involves my, my children and then my grandchildren. So I would just like you to take that in consideration, and also noting that it is, said that it's to be a lighted tower, that it is a lighted tower. And I know that T-Mobile said they have a specific, that they have a specific need, but I'm in question of whether our neighbors are in specific need of a 260-foot tower. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Beasley?
I do just have one question. When you moved out there, did you not have a little bit of consideration or concern about the major amount of lines with the Florida power and light situation? That wasn't a concern of yours?
So the power lines, they actually run along Coral Farms, along Coral Farms Road, which is, no, it's not, that is, it doesn't block sunsets and sunrises and those things, it's just part of the, the normal culture of the area.
Okay. All right, thank you. I just would like to make a statement when Mr. Beasley was talking about the photography. We did a site visit roll call on all of our members, and I think everybody indicated that they had visited the site. So we're well aware of the surrounding houses and land, and so that's the reason that we do make site visits, to make sure that we understand and can see exactly what we are trying to vote on and pass. So I just wanted to make sure that you understood that. I don't know if you realize the site visit roll call was for that, but that's what it's for. Oh, okay, all right, so that clears that. Okay, Zach, before we, you have a letter of opposition that you received that you need to read into the record?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct. For the record, Zachary Baker, Planning and Development Services, just going to read it verbatim. October 18th, 2023, Attention, Planning and Development Services of Putnam County, regarding application SUP 23-000009 to allow a communication cell tower in the Agriculture Zoning District at parcel ID 22-08-24-0000-0020-0000. It's lengthy, so bear with me. I would like it noted in public record and proceedings to be considered by the Zoning Board of Adjustment that I am not in favor of the cell tower placement. Dear esteemed members of the Planning and Zoning Boards, thank you for taking the time and attention to review my letter in opposition of the placement of the proposed cell tower. As the future inheritor and steward of neighboring property, the placement of the cell tower at the parcel ID, it's listed out again, would not only hurt my current and future business ventures, it would hurt the current and future business ventures of other neighboring properties and the business opportunities of current and future Flora Home residents. As the future steward of neighboring property on Coral Farms Road, I must consider how the inherited land can pay for itself. According to the USDA 2017 Census, farm agritourism revenue more than tripled when compared to the 2002 census, to almost $950 million in 2017, when adjusted for inflation, in parentheses, wit at all 2019. There are some citations within this letter as well. The 2017 census did not include revenue data for wineries, however, previous census data did include winery revenue as part of agritourism revenue data wit at all 2019. Therefore, when winery data is included, agritourism was almost a billion-dollar industry and opportunity for agricultural communities such as Flora Home. According to Allied Market Research, agritourism is projected to increase by 13.4% from 2021 to 2027, Analytics 2021. In May of 2017, the Florida Farm Bureau Federation conducted a study to discover what consumers want from their agritourism visit. Of the topics that consumers were most interested in, in an agritourism experience, observing rural scenery was the fourth-largest experience they desired, agritourism in the Florida Consumer 2017. Additionally, 90% of respondents believe agriculture is a large industry in Florida, and 64% of those who had experienced agritourism indicated they were likely to return to agritourism locations, agritourism in the Florida Consumer 2017. Of the respondents who had not participated in an agritourism experience, 59% indicated they were unaware of agritourism, or did not know where to go for an agritourism experience, agritourism in the Florida Consumer 2017. Flora Home can be the location for those consumers to participate in an agritourism experience. Putnam County and Flora Home have already seen a rise in agritourism... Putnam County and Flora Home have already seen a rise in agritourism and businesses dependent on scenery. There are you-pick blueberries and grapes on Coral Farms Road. There are profitable wedding venues, event venues, and florals found at Coventry Oaks Farm and Bannerville Oaks Farm in Putnam County that can be affected. In addition, photographers from all over stop in my parents' driveway to take pictures of the sunset right where the tower is projected to go. Placing the tower in this particular location will ruin the observation of rural scenery. Photographers will no longer take photos of the sunset at this location, which means Flora Home in Putnam County will no longer receive free advertising to encourage people to visit and spend money in our communities. In the four years that my parents have called Flora Home and Coral Farms Road home, they have hosted a wedding and an extremely well-attended fall festival event. Placing a cell tower at this location would diminish the agritourism business opportunities current and future for my parents, myself, and all current and future residents of Flora Home. This cell tower would be an eyesore that would ruin the rural scenery and deter visitors from spending money to stay and visit our community. Again, I would like it noted in public record and proceedings to be considered by the zoning board of adjustment that I am not in favor of the cell tower placement. It is bad for Flora Home and it is bad for agritourism business. Instead, I propose the cell tower be placed somewhere that already is zoned for city industrial needs, such as near the power lines and the Etnia Forest, at a reduced cell tower height. If the goal of the cell tower is to support the George's Lake community, the placement and height of the cell tower should be adjusted to represent the goal. Thank you again for your time and consideration in reviewing my letter. Kindly, J. Promise Ganey, M.S.O.L., signed by such individual." And then the three citations listed throughout the letter.
What was the last name? Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Johnson, we'll give you an opportunity to address some of the concerns.
Hi, appreciate it. I think first, you know, we heard a lot about agritourism, which I, you know, and not wanting this tower, but they're talking about bringing a lot of people to the area who will all have cell phones and need quality service and coverage. I know another thing that was mentioned, again, concern with the tower on property values. You know, I have dealt with certified property appraisers who have looked at this issue. And, and I have a copy of a report. It's not, it's a generalized report that I got from the development director in Pasco County, if anyone's interested in seeing it. But basically, this was a certified MIA appraiser who does, who's looked at tower impacts for two decades. And he basically, in doing the study, looked at, did comparative studies of property values and also did interviews with realtors and county property appraisers. And of the county property appraisers he interviewed, they said that they do not use proximity to a communication tower in their valuations. And the conclusion of that study was, and this is a study from 2023, was that the market evidence is clear and consistent that there's no discernible market, market data to support impacts on market value of properties as a result of their proximity to communication towers. So, I mean, I think that, I, I did think the question was appropriate that was asked of one of the neighbors where, that you asked if the substation was there when they moved in. Yes, and it was. And so, I mean, this, they're, they're talking about a communication tower. And granted, it's going to be taller than what's on the substation, but this is appropriate. You have a substation, which is an essential service, providing electricity. And then abutting it next to it or near it, tucked behind it, you have the cell tower, which is also providing a necessary service to the surrounding property owners. So again, I, I mean, I think we have met the requirements as indicated by your staff for the special use permit approval. And I'd just ask for that approval. And I'm, again, here to answer any questions.
Well, I think a couple of times it was mentioned, why not place it closer to Lake George, you know, George's Lake or George's Lake, you know? So I'm sure that the study has been done, I'm assuming.
Correct. I mean, T-Mobile and was part of your packet, did a full, you know, they have a search area where they can go to provide the necessary coverage. And they have submitted RF documentation showing that it's needed at this height in this area to meet their coverage needs.
And then there was another question, why not move it more north than right behind the substation? Because this is a large piece of property, correct?
Right, it's 100 acres. But then I would also say it's behind the substation, which is already there. I mean, this is a perfect screening, further screening for the tower area. And then if you're talking about putting it, you know, where there's an existing road going down to it and all that, if you're talking about moving it somewhere else on the property, then you're talking about the question of wetlands and floodplain.
Is there a wetland in that area?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Johnson? Ms., go ahead.
How tall are the transmission lines?
I do not know that. I do not know that. I would think 50 feet, maybe?
How long, how far you, I mean, how tall are you?
I would think it'd be a lot more than that. I was, I was just curious because those are quite visible from everywhere around there.
Got to be at least 100 feet, at least I would think.
They might be.
Those are major transmission lines.
Feeding, feeding the, the substation.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr.?
Maybe you could just reiterate the possibility of it, of it falling on the substation. That came up, maybe you can just reiterate.
Sure, and, and I pulled this because I know that did come, come up. Here is a signed and sealed letter from an engineer talking about the construction and the fall zone. So you have someone who is putting their licensure saying this is what it's designed to fall within the, the lease area. And I agree, like, that seems crazy to me. But my son is currently in school to become a mechanical engineer. And I know they can do some amazing things. But again, he's put, this is signed and sealed that he's saying that will be the fall zone. Obviously, that will be incorporated into any of the building permit documents and everything for.
Did I see there was a 35-foot radius fall zone?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, that's rather small.
Yes.
Area, but, so it does, it doesn't go losing like that?
It doesn't fall like a tree is.
Okay, it does.
Yep.
Let's talk about lighting.
Yes.
Are we talking about, like, there's, on my way home, there's two. I passed by two. They have one red light on the very, very top that you can only see at night.
Right.
Is that the type of lighting we're talking about? Are you talking about?
Well, I don't know the, I mean, it's lighting that has to meet whatever the FAA requirements are. But I know your code has a specific provision where lighting's required. It says the applicant has to present the county with all available lighting alternatives and obtain county approval in order to ensure the least disturbance to the surroundings. So that will be part of our site plan and building permit review with the county.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, we will close the meeting to the public and open it up for discussion and motion.
Madam Chair, I move we approve special case number SUP 23-000009 as it meets the criteria for a special use permit as referred by Section 45-1083 of the Putnam County Land Development Code. With all the recommended conditions by staff and authorize the chairman to send the final order.
I second it.
All right, we have a motion and second to approve special use permit 23-000009. Any further discussion? If none, all of those in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. But motion carries unanimously, eight, zero. I know there's some opposition, so I would hope that the company will work close with the staff and resolve any issues or concerns. And there is a 30-day appeal process. Okay, thank you. Okay, let me see what's on our agenda.
Minutes.
The minutes.
I can mention we approve.
At least, let me see, I got a, what date was it? I don't have it with me. For some reason, I don't have them in front of me.
Very bad.
September what?
16. They pay her $1,000 a month.
August 16.
Okay, September, August, I mean, okay, it's August. So we don't, we didn't have a meeting in September. Okay, the minutes for August 16th, 2023. Everybody had a chance to read them? Any corrections? Move to approve?
Move they be approved as read.
All right, we have a motion and then a second to approve the minutes for August 16th, 2023. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, minutes are accepted.
Move we adjourn.
Okay, we have a.
New business.
We have no other business, so Mr. West has made a motion to adjourn.
Wait, wait.
Oh, sir.
Can I bring some new business?
Sure.
I'm very excited to share that the Planning and Development Services Department is now fully staffed. Behind me and who presented the variance request, we've got Michael Graves, our new planner one.
Okay, I was going to mention, and it sort of goes zoom over my head sometimes. Welcome aboard.
Next, next to Jenny, we have our new planner two, Jennifer Gazelle.
Oh, okay, nice. Oh, and the reason that, I know we, Mr. West adjourned, but then we can maybe go back and put this in the minutes. The reason I ask about the shrubbery around the accessory structure on Park Drive, we approved a accessory structure across on Riverside Drive. And I saw, when I was down there today, I saw it had been built, but there's no shrubbery around that building.
We can definitely rectify that.
It's on Riverside Drive. I didn't, I didn't get the address because I, but it's a nice gray to garage-type white door. It's a nice, nice facility. But I thought for sure that we had said that there had to be shrubbery on that one, too.
Is it the one that's like closer to the entrance of Riverside? Or is it the one that's all the way?
No, the one at 127 used to be mine. But no, this is when you turn the corner, you get on Riverside, it's right on the right.
Okay, we will look.
That was the reason I asked, so.
We'll look back through the file and, and try to see if we can't remedy that. It'll just be a, a notice of violation. He's.
Because, well, you know, before he got his final CO, he's supposed to have those rubbery planted.
Correct, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll look into that. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
I think I have another thing. This doesn't need to be on the record, I don't think. Several months ago, we approved Whittington Electric, remember that?
What?
Whittington Electric.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. And we all spoke about the fact that it looked like it had been kind of there for a while.
You're talking about the double wide?
Yes, the double wide was told, we were told by the attorney that the double wide would be moved. The double wide is still sitting there.
Do they have a certain timeframe to move that double wide? Or is that, wasn't part of the variance or special use? It probably wasn't part of the special use, I don't think, because all we were looking at was the, the buildings in the back.
I would have to look at the, the final order for that and see if that was conditioned or what the case may be.
I don't think it was, but.
60 days.
I'll take a look when they finish the break.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
You don't want this, do you?
I, I know you guys are, are up to here in work, but, you know, sometimes we would like to see making sure that people are adhering to the rules and regulations and not getting what they want and not completing the job. But we do appreciate your hard work. You guys work hard. I'm glad you have the job and not us.
On behalf of all of us, thank you.
Okay. I'm tired. All right.
It meant a treat.
Can we do, well, we, we went back and reneged on the adjournment. So, Mr. West, you want to do it again?
Move we adjourn.
Okay, all right, thank you. We adjourn.